Good evening, everyone. I am welcome to the school. We're meeting on May 11th. Everyone is here tonight, so we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with approval for the meeting minutes of April 13th and April 19th. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So our next agenda item is the addendum to the memorandum of agreement with the DEA.
Erica, are you going to do the non-public? Or were you doing those all at once?
Oh, I did them all at once. Should I do them separately?
I actually, sorry, then I was going to ask this question. I don't know which is right. Is our new Assistant Superintendent or Assistant Principal at Barca, is her name Anne or Annie?
It was Anne on her resume.
Okay, I was just going to correct the spelling, so I guess it doesn't matter because she's both ways in the minutes.
I believe it's Annie, but I can check on that to be sure. I believe it's Annie. I can double-check on that to be sure, though. Or Kathy, Annie, right?
Anne.
Anne? Okay, Anne. I stand corrected.
Okay, no problem. Nope, I always welcome questions. So our next agenda item is the memorandum of agreement, an addendum to the memorandum of agreement with the DEA, so I'm going to pass that on to Mary Ann.
Sorry, these casts getting in the way. So good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have an addendum to the memorandum of agreement between the Derry School Board and the Derry Education Association, and I am asking that this be signed by our board. This is just a real update on the current agreement that we have, and we update this with our union. We continue to meet with our union representation every week from the SAU staff, and this update includes very, very minor updates. Basically, it revolves around close contact definitions and the travel requirements, which have now changed, and we wanted to make sure that we just don't, certainly don't violate that. And one of the others, the other updates is the three to six feet distance. So those are basically the updates in this, and if anyone has any questions, you may ask them at this time.
Does anyone, Derek, would you like to speak to it as the?
No, I think it's just an ongoing sign of the working together between the board and the union, making sure that everyone feels comfortable in our environment and also responding to the changes from the state DOE and their guidance. So I appreciate them continuing to work with us and making sure that everyone's on the same page.
I have a question on item number two. You know, this indicates in item number one that we're going to end this at the end of June, but item number two says August 21, 2020. The context is a little, is that a typo, or is that where this indicates where this agreement started from?
Right, and so item number two, that's a good question. It says, "As of August 21, 21st, 2020, the following list of symptoms/conditions will be included on the screening survey." So we have a screening survey that goes out on a daily basis called the Daily Screening Survey. And so that's a daily screening survey that's sent out with the staff. So it began, the origin of that screening survey was August 21st.
Very good. I just want to make sure we weren't starting the clock over again, and that was a typo, so.
Yep. That's when the screening survey began.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any questions about this? If so, I would accept a motion to approve.
A motion to approve the addendum to the memorandum of agreement between the Derry School Board and the Derry Education Association.
I have a first. Is there a second?
A second.
And I'm going to take a roll call vote since this is for a memorandum of agreement. I'll start with Lynn.
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brenda? And the chair votes yes. Motion passes. Thank you very much for everyone's work in making sure we follow all the rules and we keep up with what we're doing. So now we will move on to personnel. Mary Ann?
Put it on here. Okay, so tonight, I bring to you a few resignations. Two were actually hand-carried this evening. They came in a little later than when the agenda went out, and two were on the agenda. I present to you tonight the resignation of Kristen Thibodeau, our Chief Psychologist and District Wide, Fran Leach, Science Teacher at Gilbert H. Hood Middle School, and Rachel Babcock, Speech and Language Pathologist, District Wide, and Kathleen Monley, Special Education Teacher, East Area Memorial Elementary School.
Move to approve with many thanks for the many years that have been given to the district on behalf of our kids and our staff and our community.
And do I have a second? And is there any discussion? I would just echo what Brenda said. We thank them both for their service, and we wish them best of luck. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item was the Pinkerton update by Mr. Farley. I don't know, has he left that with?
With the nominations first.
Oh, administrators, okay. So the next is the nomination of administrators. My apologies.
It's okay. Can't forget that. Tonight, I present to you the nominations of the administrators that you have on the list before you, much like those of the teacher lists that we nominated in the prior meeting. I ask that you accept the list of the administrators before you. You know, it goes, I guess goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway, that our administrators work extremely hard. I, you know, am so very proud and grateful to work with an incredible team. They are, I have many of them here tonight, and certainly not representative of all of them, although I know many of them watch on Zoom really every meeting, and next year they'll be back with us in person with what we know and love as our school presentations. That is truly, I always say, the best part of our meeting, and really the heart and soul of our organization in Derry, and I truly say it's a community of learners and leaders. Our administrators, they are at the helm of what we do every day. We are all teachers. Every single one of us are teachers. We're also learners and leaders, and I could not be more proud, I could not be more grateful for the administrators with whom I work, side by side every day. A leader is only as good as those with whom they lead. And, you know, Derry could not be more well-represented by the group of administrators in the Derry Cooperative School District. They're an incredible group of committed, articulate, and loving school leaders, committed to every child and family in this school district. So with that, I express my heartfelt gratitude to every administrator in this district, and I think they know how much I care about them, and I am grateful for how much they care about our students and families, and each other.
Move to approve the list of administrators as nominated by Mary Ann.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say, I will echo your words, and I'll also say that as I looked at this list, it's sad that Jane and Dan LaFleur are not on here because since I've been on the board, I've been, they've been part of this list since then, which is, you know, a couple of years. So it's just sad not to see them, but I'm happy that they'll retire and have some fun with whatever their plans are, but I didn't want to not recognize them.
We do wish the best to Jane and Dan. They've been wonderful people to work with, and I hope they enjoy their retirement. They've definitely earned it. And with that, I will take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So with that, now we actually move on to the Pinkerton update. Was that shared with you, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Mr. Farley is not here.
Chris is going to read it, right, Chris?
Yes, I am again the celebrity reader for Jude. There have been very few COVID cases over the last few weeks relative to before, only a handful each week. For this reason, Pinkerton will continue with fully in-person learning until the end of the school year, exclamation point. This week is Pinkerton Spirit Week, featuring fun days such as Maui Monday and Tai Dai Tuesday. National Honor Society inductions will take place safely on campus this month, as well as other events and service opportunities. Safe graduation plans have been sent out to seniors. AP exams will continue to be administered throughout May. The location, method of examination varies, but all students who need Chromebooks for AP exams are being provided to them. A new student-run news show and a recent student-written edition of the Clock Tower Times have been published and are available on Pinkerton's website, as are the Freshman Friday podcasts. And finally, for Pinkerton students looking for volunteer opportunities, the Academy Mentor Program, AMP, is seeking students to assist with freshman seminars, and suicide and bullying prevention programs are seeking volunteers as well. And that's all we have from Jude.
Well, we thank Jude for his virtual update. He's always very thorough, and we thank Chris for being his voice tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're glad that Pinkerton's back in and that those students can enjoy a bit of the rest of their year, and we will now move on to the East Area Water Update, which Jeremy will provide.
So we've got our first quarter letter for 2021, and our running average is still at 19, so we're going to keep seeing these until we fix the problem. We've fulfilled all the requirements. When we get these letters, we had to just fill some of this out and post them at the school to replace the old ones that were there. Part of this one has an expected resolution date, so we just told them that a more formal plan for connection is, and scheduling is due to be submitted to the DES by June 2nd. So we do have some information right now from Underwood Engineering that we're going to need to go over, and we should have more information on that by the next meeting so that we can decide what we're going to do. But, you know, we get these in the mail, and we just want to let everybody know that we're going to keep getting them until we fix it. So the average hasn't gone up, it's still at 19.
Do we have a projected timeline on any of this, Jeremy? Where we're at, what, when we think we might be digging into this literally?
That's a loaded question because of the way that we're trying to fund it, and the requirements that we're going to be forced to go through may extend it. They weren't completely assuring that it would be done this year at this point because of the requirements that they have to follow, so that's kind of still up in the air, and we're back and forth with how we're going to deal with it, so.
Sounds to me like a weekend with the school board, picks and shovs.
That's right.
So Lynn, we had, Jeremy and I have been working with the state because we were going to try to access COVID funds for both the Grinnell Project, Grinnell Water Project, and the East Area Water Project, and we spoke to the state last week, and we were notified that the Grinnell Project was a definite no, that they would, it would not meet the criteria to be funded through ESER funds. So we know that that's going to be a project that would have to be funded through district funds, so that, that project we need to sit and work on for a timeline, but that one can be done through the bidding process that the town went through, and if the state does not approve East Derry through COVID funds, then we will probably go that same route. But if we do it, if the state approves it through COVID funds, then yes, you would have to use Davis Bacon Act, and that takes a much longer process, like Jeremy said, which would definitely mean that that project wouldn't get done this summer. So it really just depends on whether the state accepts it through COVID funds or not. I would say after our conversation with the state, it would be likely not through CARES Act funds.
Which is a tough spot because technically it prolongs the process, only to find out later that if it's a no, then, but it's worth trying.
What kind of timeline do we think on that response? Do we know?
On the response? I'm not sure. We've been going back and forth with Katie from the state, and I don't know if she goes to the man behind the curtain, but she doesn't name names, and she just, you know, it's like buying a car. The guy disappears for a little while and comes back. I'm not sure what their timeline is like, but I know just the bid process to go through the ESER funding is a long-drawn-out process.
Yeah, Davis Bacon wages and whatnot kind of start to concern me, and evolving into the timeline, you know, makes it a little deeper.
Yeah. Almost like it, versus into next summer, but in speaking to our contact for the PFAS on our end, all we would have to do is have a plan, let them know that there's a plan, and they can extend the deadlines. So I don't think it's a do or die. I think that as long as we have our ducks in a row and we're moving forward, then they're okay with that, but we'll still need a plan by June 2nd. We'll have to know what we're doing.
And we're not quite there yet where we are.
We're very close.
Okay. Well, if you need quality time with Buildings and Grounds Committee, let me know.
We will be doing that.
Looking for something to do.
We actually, we're just talking about that today. Oh, please, this afternoon.
Yeah, we'll be reaching out to you. All right. Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you very much for the update. We appreciate all your work. We know this is a really long process and a difficult one, and we appreciate all your work.
It'll be exciting to be done with it.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Yeah.
So the next item on our agenda tonight is the school funding lawsuit, and just to give the public some background on this, there have been a number of lawsuits related to school funding that first started with the Claremont lawsuits, but this latest one is actually led by the Conval District and initially included two other school districts, Messinic and Winchester. They hired Michael Tierney at Wadley Star &amp; Peters, and they have been, they have alleged that the amount of money that we're now giving per student is not, is not appropriate, and that it needs to be more, and that they're looking to really push the state to increase that amount. So they are asking for other schools to join in and help fund their effort so that we can make some forward motion. So as of now, there are 10 towns that have joined their efforts. Besides the three I just mentioned, there is Oyster River School District, Grantham, Newport, Hillsboro Deering, Fall Mountain, Claremont, and Menatuck. The list was just sent to me today. In addition, they have asked us if we would consider joining and have also recently had the approval yesterday of a large district that will be voting soon, so we wouldn't be the only large district. The way this lawsuit works, because Conval is the lead plaintiff, they are going to hold 50% of the stakes, so whoever else joins would divide up the other 50%. There is no amount that this will cost because they really don't know, so what they're asking towns to commit if they join to support this is either a percent, or a percent and a cap, or just a number. So we are, there was a hearing on April 21st, and on the 21st, the judge told Michael, told Michael Tierney and the plaintiffs that they had 30 days to add additional towns. So I'm bringing this to the board's attention tonight so that we can have a discussion about whether we'd like to join in and contribute, and what amount and what cap. If people have any other questions, I can answer them based on the information I have from Michael Tierney. I also spoke with the superintendent at Conval, so I'll leave it at that, and I'll answer any questions and then open the floor to discussion. Paul?
With respect to the percent, would that be subject to change depending upon how many more districts entered into the agreement? So in other words, if, we'll say that we said we commit ourselves to 50% on being generous, of that, 50%, of that 50%, which would be 25% of the overall cost, and then a bunch of other districts change, joined, potentially you'd have what would add up to be greater than 100%. So does that change, or do we say like no more than 10%? Or how does that, how does that make, is that an automatic adjustment or what?
So whatever we voted on, we would, it's unclear that, to be honest, I'm not certain. What, what Michael Tierney told me is right now, besides Conval, which is holding greater than 50%, the district that has the lowest percent is 6%, and the district that has the highest percent is 22, and as I understood that, that's of the other 50%, the percent Conval's not holding. We could either give them a percent, or a percent with a capped number, or just a number. And, or we could, we, or we could have more questions and need to hold another meeting to make a final decision, but I can't, because he's still waiting on other towns, I can't tell you exactly how that would fall out. But I would suggest, because we have to budget for this, that we actually come up with a number if we were going to pick one. The other thing is, we did talk to our attorneys, who said that the money could come from our legal account. So that's one other thing that people should know.
So I think, kind of to help organize our thoughts, I think we have to kind of think of two different things. One is, do we want to be in this lawsuit? And then, how much do we want to commit? So I'll speak to both, but we've seen that, you know, we had a Senate committee that was tasked with looking at the current funding methods, and for the most part, that committee's report, which was very thorough and had a lot of good recommendations, went ignored by our Senate and House. So it, I think, just as before, Derry has supported lawsuits because there was no other alternatives to assist our town, so I would support being on the lawsuit. As far as commitment, I think we just, we pick a number that we're comfortable with. I don't know, 25,000 or 35,000 is, seems reasonable for everyone. We could always amend that at a later date if needed, but those would be my thoughts.
So the one other thing, just so people understand the money, there's a couple of options. You can, they will, you can just make one lump payment for a year, or what they're doing for a lot of people is each month, they take all their billed expenses and divide them by people's percentages. So those are the, that's how the money would be paid out.
I think before talking about exact money, I think philosophically, this is the good fight. This is what we're talking about. When we talk about the downshifting of funds from the state down to the local level, they are not giving us adequate funds. That's what the Claremont decision, that's what everything else has been. This is something I think that, like I said, philosophically, we need to jump on because we have 10 representatives up there that should be fighting this, and we're not seeing it. And like you said, in the Senate, we're not seeing it either. So I am in agreement that we should jump on it, just how much.
There's some clarity as to the idea of amending the amount at a later point. You know, they usually go into this knowing what they're, what they have to work with or they don't. So how would we amend this if we found ourselves into it and needing to back off or add more? What's that idea about?
So for right now, what they're looking for is either a percent that leaves you open to whatever, a percent of whatever that number is, or to, if we wanted to be certain, a percent with a cap, saying, for instance, to make up a number, we would give 15% up to 25,000, so we knew we would never be liable for more than 25,000. I didn't discuss with the attorney what would happen if we wanted to give more down the road. I more asked him if there was a way we could ensure if we chose to participate, that we knew how much we'd have to spend.
Couple of points. Currently, the higher court has kicked this back for some reconsiderations, and that's where we're at now. The door is open for other districts to join this, which I was in favor of, I think, a year ago, because I see the inequities that are being laid out here. I lost train of thought. Doesn't happen a lot, but what was I saying? Remember?
You were saying because of the inequities, the doors been kicked open, and...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I'm going to timeline, I'm sorry. Bear with me. So timeline, right? Do we know where the timeline is on this? And, you know, is it, is it in the beginning stages at this point, and it's going to go another year as most trials and, you know, tend to string out? Meaning, when does this benchmark happen, and, and how, and how does that correlate to our budget process? That's one point. The other point I wondered is, how is this complaint filed with the courts? And, and I ask that because if the complaint is challenging, in my mind, if the complaint is challenging how the state is funding once again, it would seem to me that the state is going to be forced to change its methods again, which means that even if we're the participants in giving some percentage towards this fight, it doesn't necessarily mean that we benefit in that same way. If the education funding formula gets altered because of this lawsuit, it means all districts in the state would benefit from it. And, and so I just want to point that out as kind of a cautionary aspect. Before, we had joined as a friend of the complainant, and I, I don't have an issue with that on the principle. However, I think these other districts may be in a more critical situation than us. However, I'm not, that doesn't imply that I'm in agreement with what's happening with the rollback of retirement and, and how we're losing student funding either. So my, that second part of the question is, is do we know how that complaint has been established with the court?
So what Michael Tierney told me is this was filed with the Superior Court, and it's been sent back to, it's been sent back to both parties for further discovery, and in terms of timeline, he said it would be at least 12 months, but it could more likely be a couple of years. And if you wanted more specifics than that, I could, I could follow up with him at a later date, but that's what he told me in our discussion.
So I think in regards to that, a timeline of 12 to 24 months and $25,000 to $35,000 isn't so hard to swallow, depending on how it's dispersed and doesn't interrupt with other issues that the district has before it. I think Mr. Lamath's point about how we're going to get a water line in, and that being up in the air, I think is, is a big key. You know, it's just one big key point that we have to look at the entire budget and what we're faced with down the road, so I would just urge some caution on that.
John or Brenda, do you have some thoughts? Everyone else is.
Is the recovery of funds for specific years, or is it exponential? Because I, and I'm not sure that this is correct, but I believed in the beginning of what I read, it was for a two-year time period where districts were losing a significant amount of money. Is that correct or incorrect?
I can't answer that question. I don't know exactly what, how the recovery of funds would work. One thing I, one thing I do know, because he stressed this, is that if we participated and we participated monetarily, we would only be paying whatever costs move forward. There would be no cost looking back on what they've spent already.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out where, where, you know, what, what the dollar amount is, or what, what they're actually trying to recover. Because I felt like there was a recover piece to start with, and that may have changed since it's come back to the attorneys. I'm not really sure. I'm in favor of it. I, we're the third-largest school district in the state. We're constantly losing funds. We need to do something to support and make sure that our voice is heard further than this, these tables, and further than the tables in Concord, because they're not here heard there very well. You know, we've been part of the other lawsuits, and if you look at the towns that are in this now, they're the Claremont towns, continually struggling for funds to educate their children. they're the Claremont towns continually struggling for funds to educate their children and our children. So I'm in favor of it. I don't really know where the dollar amount is. I thought at one point, I also read that other districts were doing 15,000 to start. I don't know how that works. Like, we say, well, we'll give you 5,000 and they recover a lot of money, but somebody else gave 25. How does that money get dispersed? I just, I think I need more, more information about how to share the cost, but I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, I'd also echo the sentiments of Brenda and Derek and Jess as well. And I think philosophically, it makes sense, seeing that we are the third largest town. I mean, I think it, it would make sense to, I mean, not only put our name out there, but also to back it financially as the third largest. Obviously, I know that comes with a higher cost, but I also think that that's going to, like, kind of send a proverbial message as well. And hopefully that will continue to, continue to snowball. I mean, I know, started off with three, there's already 10 additional towns. If we, if we're one of those that hop on, then you could imagine possibly Manchester, Nashua, Salem, Concord, those school districts are going to be right behind.
So I, like everyone else, I think we, we should join to some extent. I, I support us choosing a percent and a cap so that we know what our, what our contribution would be so we can better budget for it. What I will say is if people, just, just for, just for administrative, if, if we can't come to a decision about a number tonight, we would need to meet before the next meeting because the judge had given those towns a month from April 21st to make final decisions. So we wouldn't, our next meeting is after the 21st. So I don't know if anyone has specific thoughts on a number or a percent or?
So I think I've been a part of some of these types of lawsuits with, within organizations. And usually what happens is you did come out with the first round of funding of what they, you know, kind of guesstimate what this is going to cost over the course of a year or something. And then at a later date, if they need to continue the lawsuit, they'll come back around and say, can you, can you chip in another? And then at that point, they usually have a more finite number, like can each of you give us an extra 5,000 or something like that? So like I said before, I think if we committed to, I think, 25 or 35, wherever, somewhere in that range, it shows kind of the weight of our district. And it's not a huge number. I think if we have, whatever, I think we're just under 5,000 total students or 4,500 total students, that's like, if the formula changes by $6, you know, if we win and we'll recoup those costs and it's got a nice little insurance policy. So I think, you know, even if we don't know the exact breakdown because other towns may be joining within the next week, I think it's important just to, to jump in, to, to get involved now. Give them the answers they need so they can proceed with the judge and, you know, start working down the road.
And would someone like to make a motion?
How does this, how does this roll out budgetarily for us and when do we write the check?
So we have two options for writing a check. You can write a lump sum on an annual basis or their lawyer is billing monthly and then you're billed monthly a percentage of what you're contributing, of what you're contributing. So there's not a set rule of how we would do that. And I don't know if there's, from the administrator's standpoint, there would be an ideal way, an easier way to do this.
And I think you and I had talked with Mary Ann about that the cost would start in this fiscal year. So I guess estimating what the cost would be in doing a purchase order is the best administratively to do it that way. And if they did it monthly, that would be just as easy and then we would be able to prepare budgetarily for that.
This fiscal year ending on, on June 30th or 31st or something?
Yeah, I think there's going to be some cost because they're already billing out other districts, is my understanding. So there'd probably be some cost from now until June 30th. And then we would probably open up another purchase order starting July 1.
Do we have 15,000 left in this year's budget to do that?
We do.
That exorbitant? I'm looking at dividing an estimated amount that Mr. Anderson's suggesting, Derek.
So if you're, if you're looking, if we were looking, that would be more like if we would did an annual amount as opposed to if, what I heard Jane just saying is that she would be okay if she was billed monthly. And then it would be a much smaller amount. We would take whatever the number we agree to and divide it by 12.
Right, I would just open up a purchase order for what I would estimate the total amount and, and then I would just wait for the monthly billing.
I'm sorry, Jane, does that work to your experiences, Derek?
Yeah, I think monthly would be fine. I think it, it, it's going to give us a little better, you know, as a business owner. Cash flow is always what we look at. So if we can spread that out over 12 months, then it gives us a little more leeway. And, you know, it looks like we're going to have two billing cycles potentially this, end of this year and then starting next year. So it gets some, some space there between more expenditures.
So what I hear people saying, if people are meaningful to it, is we would be willing to commit, if I take between your two numbers, 30,000, so if we divided that by two, 15,000 divided into 12 payments. Would that, would that sound reasonable to people?
I, I would be, I would be up to a 25 or 30,000 paying almost a third or a larger lump as much as possible in this fiscal year and not tapping into the next fiscal year. You know, the next fiscal year start monthly. But initiating with like a third down or as close to that as possible, whatever this current year's budget would, would, has for margins.
That's where my mind was going to. I was going to ask if we have an estimate on what is left in the legal budget for this year? And if we could get, using more funds now as like a little down payment and then go monthly.
Well, there's nothing left in the legal fund right now, unfortunately.
Have a bake sale.
So if you'd like to hold a bake sale. So yeah, there, I don't anticipate having any funds remaining in the legal fund. But since it is a bottom line budget and as we discussed with our attorney and Mary Ann and Erica, legal funds are always estimated when you're doing your budget and they can always frequently either go up or go, or go down depending on if you're in a negotiating year or you happen to have whatever issues going on in that particular year. So to over expend your legal fund would not be unusual. So if you were going to put more towards that, that fund this year, that, that would not be inappropriate to do that.
I'll scratch that idea.
So just a technical question, do we need a vote that just says we're joining? Or a vote that says we're joining how much and how we'll pay?
I think we need all three.
And would people be comfortable with 30,000 or Derek had said 25 to 35, so I'd just pick the number right in the middle?
I'd, I, I would think that 30,000 would be a, a good number to, to look at for the, for the year on that. And we would, we would say 30,000, not to exceed 30,000. We wouldn't stipulate a percentage. Is that correct?
Yes, we would just state a number instead of a percentage.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we join the Conval lawsuit up to $30,000. End of story.
Second?
So is there a time period if they're billing us? Would it be 30,000 for the time period of May, whatever the date is, May 11th through May 11th of next year or?
So I will, I will have to check with Michael Tierney, the attorney, on that. The next billing cycle would be for, for part of May and June? So I'm not sure how he would want to bill that, but may, but I could get in touch with him and have you and I and, you know, we, we could figure that out.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? So I'm going to take a roll call vote once again. Brenda, John, Jessica, Paul, Derek?
Yes.
Lynn?
Where am I? I just, I was just giving a little more consideration, but I'll support it with a yes.
And the chair votes yes, so that is in favor. Thank you.
And I think in the past, when we've, when we've joined lawsuits, it's, you know, either Jane or someone from her office will work with whoever is collecting the funds or billing us or whatever. So I'm sure that, once they know we're going to help them, they'll be happy to contact you. And, and I think, you know, we can leave it to you as the best, how you think is the best way to expend the funds.
Sure, I just was, I, I just wanted to make sure that the max was 30, starting at this point. The total that the board was going to contribute. Yep, okay, thank you.
So I thank everyone for a great discussion. I just want to point out for the public, this is a really, I think this is an important thing for us as a district to do. As Brenda said, we're the third largest district. Right now, we receive about $4,400 per student and we spend over, around $15,000 per student. So clearly, the way the current formula works, we're not getting what we need for an adequate education. And nowhere in Derry do we aim for adequacy, we aim for excellence. So this is putting our foot down that we really want more for our students. So I thank everyone for a great discussion. And with that, I will move on to Mary Ann for fiscal advisory committee openings.
Thank you, everyone. Per policy BDFA, I am announcing that we have fiscal advisory committee openings for the next fiscal advisory session. And this has already been posted as well and advertised per policy BDFA. The Derry School Board is seeking residents interested in serving on the fiscal advisory committee for a three-year term. Currently, there are four openings. This committee works with the Derry School Board to develop a budget for presentation to the voters at the annual school district meeting and general election. Applications are available at the superintendent of schools office, 18 South Main Street, or on the district's website. So you can pick up applications or you may find one on the district's website. The deadline for application for the fiscal advisory committee position is on May 28th, 2021. And as I said, currently, there are four openings right now. We have, as of today, we had two applicants for those four openings. And again, that's per policy BDFA. Any questions on that?
Mary Ann, what is the total amount of people that we have on the fiscal advisory committee now?
Should have nine, should have nine positions. One went unfilled last year because someone ended up not returning late, so we did not fill that ninth position.
Got it. Thank you.
So I believe there are nine.
Thank you very much, Mary Ann. I encourage members of the public who are interested in getting more involved in the schools to consider joining the fiscal advisory committee. It's a great way to have, to learn a lot more about our budget and have a direct impact into how our money is spent. So our next agenda item is back to Mary Ann for the superintendent's update.
All right, hi again. So last week, we celebrated Teacher/Staff Appreciation Week. And, and sometimes, you know, and I've said this for a long time, it's not just one week that we celebrate people. We celebrate people every week. Last week certainly was dedicated to Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. In fact, from the SAU, we are celebrating our staff tomorrow. We felt that they, that our staff, our PTAs, PTSAs did a great job last week. So we figured what we would do is provide our staff with something tomorrow and give them something to look forward to this week instead of last week. We are ever so grateful for all of our educators' dedication and commitment to students and their families. This year in particular has been most challenging and I believe the teamwork, perseverance and flexibility demonstrated by our educators have been extraordinary. I'd like to express our sincere thanks on behalf of our entire leadership team, to each educator in the Derry Cooperative School District. Thank you for all you do every day. You are simply the best. Hiring for staff is ongoing for the 21-22 school year. I'm enjoying interviewing the finalists for our open positions. It is by Zoom, just so you know. Our interviewing, our final interviews still are by Zoom. Hopefully that will resume to face-to-face very soon. And look forward to meeting with more candidates. At this time, our school district has the following openings and these are also posted on our website. Elementary, special education teacher, special education facilitator, speech language pathologist, elementary school nurse, school psychologist, middle school library assistant, reading assistants, special education assistants, food service employees and substitute teachers and assistants. So I encourage any and all of you within our community and anyone that you may be connected to, that you know, that is interested in any of these positions to submit an application to the Derry Cooperative School District as soon as possible. So we, we await your applications and hope that you apply soon. Today, I had the opportunity to visit two schools, West Runny Brook and Derry Village, and planned to visit more this week and during the weeks ahead, despite needing to get rides to and between schools. Today, I was allowed to, allowed, I say, to walk between West Runny Brook and Derry Village and had to check into West Runny Brook when I got to Derry Village because they wanted to make sure I got there safely. So I did just that. I don't know who's in charge of who anymore. However, I did make it. It was a lovely day to walk down the path and, and I enjoyed seeing the kids at recess. I can't, I kid you not, I had to check in. I enjoyed seeing the children at recess and they're having such a great time and in the hallways and so forth. Our students and staff really continue to be highly engaged in learning, working extremely hard. I still don't cross the threshold of those classrooms, just so, you know, families are aware. Even though I'm fully vaccinated, I certainly, you know, keep that threshold right now. And the kids, the kids are just absolutely lovely, engaging as always and our staff is doing an incredible job. I think the cooler weather has really benefited our students and staff and ultimately learning. Our tents outside have been really advantageous. Today, when I went to Derry Village, our phys ed teacher was using that area of the tent. And so I thank Jane and Jeremy and all of our maintenance staff for really keeping up with those tents and the mowing of the lawn around them. And I see those as, as being really valuable tools for our summer learning program as well and into the fall. So thank you again. And we're really proud of our students and students' positive attitudes and the kindness that they see and demonstrate every day. In fact, I was looking at one classroom today and they were doing their benchmark assessments and they were so excited about the progress they made. It, it really brings warmth to your heart when you see children so excited about the progress that they make in, in anything. And they're so excited to share that with you and share that with their administrator and share that with each other and their teachers. So that's just a reminder of, of why we're in the profession that we're in. So, thank you, guys. As a reminder, the last day of school for all students in grades pre-K through seven is on Friday, June 11th. And our eighth grade students' last day will be Thursday, June 10th. And details regarding end of the year activities should have been sent out to you now. And if not, you will receive them very soon. The Department of Education released information regarding, and this is quote, "rekindling curiosity", end of quote. And according to the flyer, and I'm quoting the flyer now, "The Department of Education is partnering with New Hampshire Camps and School Age Summer Programs across the state to offer students the unique opportunity to move beyond COVID-19 and be a kid again. Students of all ages, backgrounds and abilities benefit from exposure to short-term summer enrichment programs, including areas of challenge, friend-making, positivity and emotional safety", end quote. So the camp fee eligibility information is located on the flyer, which is also posted on our website, on Twitter, on our Facebook page. And families should have received a flyer from your schools and if not, I'm sure you'll be receiving them very soon. They in fact may be posted on your school's webpage as well. So take a look at those and again, this is sponsored and, and was sent out by our commissioner, was sent to us and then we sent those out to the principals. So please look for that flyer and certainly could be advantageous to your child or children and families. The reopening plan for the 21-22 school year, I know it seems like we're, you know, just moving along at, in an expeditious speed and that's what we are, will be developed in the coming weeks. We are still awaiting specific information, however, and guidance from the New Hampshire Department of Education regarding the plan's contents. So at this time, our, our school district, as you know, continues to follow the New Hampshire K through 12 Back to School Guidance and guidance from the New Hampshire Department of Public Safety and the CDC. So although we are tasked with developing a reopening plan, that's due to the New Hampshire Department of Education, we are still awaiting the specifics of that. However, Austin and I have met on that and will continue to meet and begin that process. Dr. Garofalo and I have been meeting in regards to long-term educational planning for the district as we discussed at our last meeting. During those meetings, we've thoroughly examined the subsections of our facility. During those meetings, we've thoroughly examined the subsections of our facilities reports, core academics, and unified arts, those done by the facility study committee, and those recommendations provided by the facility study committee. Because as we told you at the last meeting, I believe it was, that we would take a look at those first and kind of make a checklist of those things that have been accomplished in our district and those that haven't, and see where we'd go from there before we address and move on to anything else. Our next meeting will include a larger subgroup of administrators and focus on our findings, and then we'll expand from there. I am also in the process of scheduling visits to school sites, and that is really for the purpose of looking at educational planning. And I know I said this at the last meeting too, so I'm sounding a little repetitive, but the purpose of educational site visits are really to look at the educational programming of those sites. So what does it look like? So I've reached out to two districts and am just awaiting when we can go, when we can go after school is what I suggested, or early in the summer. So I've left that up to the two districts that I've reached out to, and hopefully, I can reach out to more. But at this time, I'm awaiting responses from two districts. Of particular importance, and I really need to stress this, is the need to balance this work with the new requirement of the 2122 reopening plan from the New Hampshire Department of Education. So we are certainly doing our best to achieve the balance of all of that, and will continue to work hard to do so. I have McKinney Vinto numbers as of May 1st, which include 32 pre-K through eight students from 26 families, 29 are doubled up, three are in hotels, and 12 students who are no longer homeless, which is great news. Pinkerton Academy reports 10 Derry students from 10 families, 13 students are no longer homeless, and there are currently no students from other districts who are staying in Derry. There have been 202 kindergarten students, a large increase in number, by the way, who registered from November 16th through May 10th. That's an, whoops, that's an increase of 25 students since our last meeting in April 13th. We went from 177 to 202. So that is great news. Families who need to register or would like to register their children, if you have any trouble at all, please call your individual school. If you don't know what that individual school is, feel free to call the superintendent of schools office and we'll guide you through that process at any time. Okay, so just call us and we'll guide you through the registration process, or any of the schools will help you as well. We continue to monitor enrollment. We haven't spoken much about enrollment because everything else has, you know, been in flux with COVID and so forth, and we're really continuing to monitor enrollment for the 2122 school year in particular. Really closely monitoring Grade 5 at Ernest P. Barca, Grade 2 at Grinnell, and kindergarten and Grade 4 at South Range. So those are the areas of close monitoring that we're doing as a leadership team at this time. Again, Grade 5 at Ernest P. Barca, Grade 2 at Grinnell, and kindergarten and Grade 4 at South Range. I would like to encourage families of students who have been homeschooled this year to notify the superintendent of schools office, 4321210, if you intend to re-enroll in our K-8 schools for the 2122 school year. We look forward to a wonderful 2122 school year for all students. So, and I know I keep talking about next year, but it takes certainly a lot of planning to make a wonderful and create and develop plans for a wonderful school year. And although we haven't taken any impetus off of this year, we always are planning, as Jane says, kind of three budget cycles, and we always plan at least for two school years at the same time. So thank you for listening and thank you for working so hard, all of our students and certainly our families, and being engaged in our staff. So, do we have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary Ann, for a thorough update. And now we will move on.
Brenda.
We will move on to Austin to talk about.
Brenda.
I just had a question, and I'm not expecting you to have the answer to it, but maybe you could obtain it for us. The Pinkerton numbers, the, I was looking at the, at Grade 9, so in September, they started out at 476 and they've dropped continually, but now they're down to 457 as in Grade 9. So I'm wondering, is that students that have not completed their freshman status or freshman classes, or are they really not there anymore? We used to get reports about students who moved or, you know, whatever, were not enrolled any longer, and we don't get those anymore, so it just, that's kind of a big number for freshman class.
There's also a decent drop in Grade 11, now that you pointed out, Brenda.
Yeah, from the beginning of the year, yep.
Okay, I have a meeting at Pinkerton tomorrow, actually, so it's perfect timing that you asked that question. The Sunday superintendents have a meeting at Pinkerton tomorrow, and we have a face-to-face meeting, so.
Thanks, I'm guessing that it's probably just class status, but still doesn't make me happy.
I will ask those questions, Grade 11 and Grade 9. I will ask those questions tomorrow. As I say, we do have a meeting, so it's perfect timing. Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? If not, we will move on to Austin to hear about balancing direct instruction and technology.
Hello, everyone. You should have a copy of the presentation if you want to look at the hard copy. Dr. Dancy will be putting it up on the screen for everybody else. I just want to point out, Maria just talked a lot about all the work that New Hampshire DOE is giving us. It'd be nice sometime if we could actually get the guidance and then be told that they're looking for this. What seems to happen a lot is we get told that we need this, and we wait on the guidance and try to figure out what it is that we might have to do. Sorry about that, just wanted to throw that out there. It's one of the fun things we deal with. So, tonight I will be addressing the balance between direct instruction and the use of technology, or specifically, screen time for both remote students and those who are face-to-face onsite with teachers. Now that we are a one-to-one district with a computer for every student, there is a new normal that is continuing to develop. And I'll stress that, continuing to develop. I will start by discussing the results of a number of research studies regarding the new normal for the time students spend on-screen in front of a computer or some other technology device. The American Academy of Pediatrics has recently updated their screen time recommendations from 1999, when the TV was the primary technology for most of us. The guidelines were intended to limit the passive, sedentary patterns of use that are typical when watching television. The new guidelines focus on quality over quantity, indicating that the quality of the media a child is exposed to is much more important than the amount of time spent on interacting with that media on-screen. The new AAP guidelines, American Academy of Pediatrics, suggest that children younger than 18 months can have screen time for video chatting, and I'm sure that's happened a great deal during this pandemic, or I hope it has, and that children two to five years young can be on-screen for up to an hour with high-quality programming. Children six or older now no longer have restrictions to the amount of time on-screen, but it should be for high-quality programming and programming, and parents should still set reasonable and consistent limits. The American Academy of Pediatrics distinguishes between schoolwork and connecting with family and friends as high-quality compared to games, movies, television, social media as low-quality screen time. A group of professionals from social science, education, pediatrics, the media, and neuroscience at a media research symposium in Illinois last May concluded that developmentally-optimized media can be beneficial for young children and a proven learning tool for children over age two. Not specific, but it may even play a role in bridging the learning achievement gap noted among low-income, disadvantaged, and underserved populations. Digital media can facilitate the development of executive function, build students' self-control and their problem-solving skills, and improve children's ability to follow directions. According to the National Association for the Education of Young Children, the emphasis on screen time is misplaced. A comprehensive definition of technology that is more developmentally appropriate now should consider what technology and content are used, how that technology and content is used, why that technology and content is being used, all in addition to how often they are used. Even John Twang, the author of iGen, "Why Today's Superconnected Kids Are Growing Up Less Rebellious, More Tolerant, Less Happy, and Completely Unprepared for Adulthood," very positive spin, has some updated advice for parents. Spending an hour or two a day with devices for a child's leisure time does not seem to be harmful for their mental health. Rand Corporation Research, yeah, Rand Corporation Research, Rand Corporation Research, say that three times, shows that the technology young kids use should focus on age-appropriate educational content, and it should encourage physical movement and social interaction to avoid the risks of sedentary and isolated use. Turn all screen time into deep learning time by guiding kids to use technology to create, collaborate, develop, and to become good digital citizens. To focus more on what, how, and why of technology, which is exactly what the teachers here in Derry are currently emphasizing with their students. So with that explanation of quality screen time over quantity of screen time, I turn my focus now to how teachers here in Derry are using technology in the classroom. Since the start of hybrid learning on Monday, January 25th, our teachers have been providing synchronous live Zoom sessions that include, excuse me, that include remote and onsite students simultaneously. And this will continue for the rest of this school year. Remote students and onsite students also learn in pairs, groups, as well as independently. Synchronous instruction increases screen time for all students because remote students need access to that direct instruction from teachers. For the remainder of the synchronous instruction and learning component, balancing direct instruction for all students will require more online live Zoom sessions and therefore more screen time for all students. In a nutshell, in other words, right now, because of the synchronicity, absolutely we are seeing more screen time in the classroom than we would normally see. For the remainder of the synchronous instruction and learning component, balancing direct instruction for all students will require more online Zooms, live Zoom sessions, and therefore more screen time for all students. How much screen time being used, is being used in face-to-face learning will decrease when teachers are no longer performing synchronous instruction on a regular basis. And I've stressed this here before, my hope is that synchronous instruction will never completely go away, but it will be used sparingly next school year to include students who must be out of the classroom for a period of time, but not on a regular basis. Please remember, as I stated before in the research review, screen time of educational, of, screen time of an educational nature is considered high-quality. Oops, don't erase it. Guidelines I mentioned earlier, like those from the American Academy of Pediatrics and other organizations, do not identify the educational standard for screen time during onsite or remote learning. This is because educational screen time is content-based, informative, and integrated as part of the learning process. Also, screen time used for connecting students with teachers and their peers is beneficial from a social-emotional context. These new guidelines are used to put restrictions on games, movies, television, social media, media, and all other non-educational, low-quality pursuits. So moving forward, as we move forward beyond the 2020-2021 school year, we will continue to evaluate technology in the classroom and screen time specifically, as our SAU and subject administrators meet with their content committees during the summer. Minimum and maximum standards for onsite screen time will be discussed, expectations will be developed, and decisions and goals will be made in preparation for the beginning of the 2021-2022 school year. Questions?
I don't have a question, but I wanted to say thank you for putting this together. I appreciate it. I have heard concerns from parents over screen time, whether it was too much going in this year, especially when hybrid and synchronous came in. And it's nice to see all the research and the work that you're putting in to evaluate it and ongoing, so.
And I want to, thank you, Jessica. And it was fascinating to read it, and, you know, when you, you'd like it to be, well, it should, and the American Academy of Pediatrics does give some pretty good specifics, but even they've opened it up because they know it's so different now, when we're talking about screen time compared to what we were talking about screen time before, sitting, you know, couch potatoes in front of the television. Not that that's a bad thing, 24/7, it is a bad thing, but every once in a while, like that author who said, "Yeah, a little bit of leisure time on the screen is fine." And I think what we'll, again, stressing teachers right now a little bit more because it's in fairness to those remote students, they need to get that direct instruction. And they also get that social-emotional piece as they're connecting with the other kids that they're not seeing who are face-to-face and so forth. So it works, it's, it's working out good. But we will continue, and as I said, especially all of our committees over the summer, will be delving into this and look, along with what we're doing for our summer learning camp, looking at where we need to pick up the pace and give some extra instruction and so forth, we'll also be looking at making some goals and some expectations and some decisions around what is screen time going to look like in 2122.
Does anyone else have any questions for Austin? Well, I will say that I thought that was a great presentation, and I think it's great we're looking at this, but I also will applaud our teachers for the work they've done to make the screen time meaningful. I remember at one point checking in on my son, because I work from home, so, and he was setting up a green screen in his room so that he could make a presentation for one of his classes. So I think our teachers have gone above and beyond in making, when the middle school had to be fully remote, making full use of making it interactive even if they were on screen. So I'm glad we'll continue to look at this and have the best balance of screens and computers, screens and in-person.
And if I may, I'm glad you brought that up because it shook some cobwebs out of my head. One of the biggest things that we've heard as far as a complaint has been, what's going on with these Wednesdays? And why are our kids doing independent work for a couple of hours later on? And I don't know how, you mentioned the teachers, they have done an outstanding job with something that is brand-spanking new. Kids coming out of college last year didn't even get classes in running Zoom sessions and so forth, as far as I could tell. And they needed that time, which ends, what's today, I believe, it's, yeah, ends on the 19th. So it's tomorrow, and then one more time, and it was necessary for them to get that professional development, to work with their colleagues, what's working for you, look what I did that really worked out good, and just trying to get comfortable with this new technology thing that they're involved in. And I do believe that's going to pay dividends as we move forward, not only to the rest of this year, but years to come.
I'll take off on that, Austin, for a minute, not to belabor the point. Yet, when Chris McCallum and I were visiting classrooms today, it was amazing the difference between today and, say, two months ago with visiting classrooms and the teacher immediately, I would say 75% of the teachers immediately turned their computer screen so that the students who had remote access who had remote access would say hi and be engaged in the conversations with us even though we're at the door. So the difference in, in just learning, that learning curve was amazing, and the kids were so excited to see us just at the door. So, just another benefit and a shout out to our staff in general.
So now that we know, we know how to balance screen time and technology, we're now going to move on to Dr. Dancy to talk about technology.
I'll probably be more than two seconds. I just, as the resident ed tech professional in the room here, I, I just love this conversation that we're having, and I want to remind people that use of education technology is primarily for communication, collaboration, creativity, and critical thinking, all very active, mind-engaging pursuits using this tool of technology. And, I mean, we'll be the first to say that passive, sit and watch, I always, there was a study done, that I read about, about, oh, now 15, 20 years ago, that students in more advantaged districts had the opportunity to tell the computer what to do, whereas disadvantaged communities often relied on the computer telling the child what to do. And we never want that to happen here in Derry, we always want the child to be telling the computer how it should be behaving, and that's, that's what I've always advocated, and I will continue to advocate and work with Austin in this. All right, that being said, let's talk about devices. I met with the subcommittee last week, and we made some decisions here regarding some of our devices. Last summer, in order to mitigate the effects of the COVID, or the trade war with China and the lack of Chromebooks that we had, we instituted a Bring Your Own Device, or BYOD initiative here in the district, and it really paid off dividends. I mean, we were able to put a device in the hands of every child thanks to the generous actions of many families throughout the district. And I can't thank them enough for doing that because we were in a very hard place. However, throughout the year, we found that there were some complications with this, notably, especially in the past month, we have found that our, our testing has been limited, we've had to replace their devices with school-owned devices because we couldn't get the secure browser on them, bringing kids in to be able to assess, we couldn't do that at home, things like that. That, plus, we're not always able to adequately filter the content in those home devices because we don't always install our filtering process on their devices as, as part of their privacy. And, oh, the last, last thing was, oh, just the liability of, of having a child bring in a very expensive personal device into the classroom caused us to reconsider the BYOD, and now that the need is over, the shipping has come back to normal, we have readily available lots of devices. We've decided to end the BYOD program at the end of this school year. Students who are enrolled in the summer learning paths can continue to use their device through the summer, but all of those devices that have been brought to school will be replaced by school-owned devices in the fall of 2021, and I will be sending out a letter either later this week or next week, when we have a little bit more accurate count of who has a BYOD device, to let those parents know what we've decided here and that they'll be receiving a device at the beginning of next year. Those devices will regularly be replaced in the fifth grade's year and the first grade year. All Chromebooks are designed, well, at least it's been our experience, and they are not building them any more durable, to last about four years. In fact, you're really lucky to get them to last four years. So it's our, our plan for rotation is to, to issue them a device in first grade and another device in fifth grade to make it through the first through eighth grade years. Now that's, that rotation isn't actually going to begin for another year or two because we don't need it to, we purchased so many devices this past year that we're not at that point yet, but starting probably the following year, I will start budgeting for rotation devices. Which brings me to my next point, is the kindergarten was never planned for in the one-to-one initiative, and so when we issued devices to the kindergarten this year, we found that teachers were a little bit of at a loss there because teaching keyboarding skills was never a part of the vision, and no matter how much of those four Cs that I want to brag about, kindergarten's a whole different animal. I taught it for a year and a half, and I know how difficult that can be. So, in some discussions with the kindergarten teachers and with our, our curriculum department, what we've decided to do is purchase a set of touchscreen Chromebooks for the kindergarten that will live in the kindergarten classrooms. They would, they would only take them home if there was some sort of indication that inclement weather was going to happen this week so that we can continue with our remote learning during inclement weather. So that's going to be the focus of the remainder of Chromebook purchases for next year. Remember, I took it out of the budget, and hopefully we can use our ESSER funds to purchase this next set and be all set for the following year. Those that we'll collect from the eighth grade will go to the BYOD students as well as those extras that we still have in the library from the last shipment. So those are the two things that we made decisions on in the subcommittee. Some other things that I just want to make you aware of, you notice I don't have my PowerPoint today with my little muncher guy, and that's good news because I haven't heard any complaints about the network in over almost a month now. Thing, we did get things ironed out, it's been very successful, and I'm knocking on whatever kind of wood this is, but it's, it's been nice not to hear from principals every other day, or every day, or every hour, our Zooms are going down. So the network is up and well, we are enjoying our five gigabits of internet access. The new firewall is sitting on my table in my office, getting ready to be installed. We had a kickoff meeting last week to start that process, and we should have that finished probably by the end of June. Every staff that needs to have a mobile device has been provided a mobile device, Chromebooks for the assistants, MacBooks for the secretaries, and the reason why we went ahead and got MacBooks for them is because that's what they use at their desks every day. We replaced their desktop machines with a, with a MacBook and bought them a separate screen, so it acts like a desktop machine now. So if we ever did have to all go remote again, they could just pick up their device and go with it. We are reevaluating a couple of things like printing and communications, we're actively researching different options for how we print in the district, and new communication tools that could consolidate and make it easier for parents and for teachers and for everybody concerned to get all of their information in one place. There's a new product that we're looking at that I'll be budgeting for next year. We are in the process right now of setting up a new student data warehouse assessment generator that will house all of our assessment data, behavior data, attendance data, so that we can have a more informed look at students who might be at risk and be able to plan, what's, oh, nobody was in that meeting today, intervention strategies, that's what it is, yes, intervention plans, so that we can meet the needs of all of our students in that way. It looks really exciting, and Lisa and Sarah and I and a few, a couple of the principals have been working together to get this all set up, and we'll be using it next year. Also, the human resources department has procured a couple of new pieces of software to help with teacher evaluations and professional development. It's tied together with our applications, or when somebody applies to the district, and also, we're trying to get things to work together so that we're a lot more efficient. Couple of other things, we're going to be switching out our online content filtering for our Chromebooks from the product Go Guardian to Securely. It's a little bit less expensive, but one of the night, the things that I like better about it is that they provide a parent component that they can set advanced content filtering for their child, and they can also look and see a history of what their child is doing on that, that Chromebook. That's something we couldn't do with Go Guardian, but I've heard over and over from parents, boy, I wish I could see what my child is doing on that Chromebook, can I shut YouTube off, can I keep them from, and this will allow us to be able to do that, and for less money. We all like that. And I think that's all I have, so, anybody have any questions?
I have one question. So you mentioned that you're not going to start that rotation of the first and fifth grade next year because you have enough devices, so what, what devices are you going to be purchasing next year?
That will be those kindergarten touchscreen.
And is that it, just the kindergarten?
Well, I'd like to buy a few more Chromebooks, just because, right now we have, when, when one gets broken, we need something to replace that with during the repair time, and what I'd like to be able to do is have a set of 25 in each building that lives in a cart that could be used as loaners. So after I get through looking at all of my numbers and stuff, I'll, I'll be coming up with the ideal number of devices that I really need in this district in order to maintain everyday instruction with a device.
And this wasn't part of your report, but I was curious, now that we've had a year of these devices in and out of people's houses, how many have we had to replace because of damage for one reason or another?
Oh, our repair rate has been extremely low. I mean, screens is usually the, the first thing to go, people will shut it with a pencil in their, in their computer, and it will, and it will crack the screen, and it's amazing how many people will come to us with a spider web and say, I don't know how I got that way. Well, it happens. But I've replaced, I've had to purchase maybe, I'm going to say 20 or 30 screens this year, out of three, out of 3,200 devices, or not, maybe 2,700 devices, that's a really, really low number. I talked to my team about this just last week, they said, really, our repairs have been very minimal, we have not had to replace, there's only, I would say, a handful, maybe 10 at the most, parents who brought a device back that was, that was totally non-salvageable, so.
That's great to hear, I was just curious.
The, the kids have done a marvelous job this year taking care of those devices. I would say chargers are a little harder, people do lose chargers, and dogs like to bite on the cords, and cats, it just happens, yeah, so.
Does anyone have any other questions for Cliff? Great, well, we appreciate your update tonight, Cliff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff.
And next, we will move on to Jane for the business administrators' update.
I just have to laugh because one of Dr. Dancy's favorite things to say to me is, I'd like to buy, and it's always, I always knew it's coming, he's looking for money. But what's been great is we've been able to use a lot of CARES Act money to fund a lot of the technology that's been really helpful to get through this year. So I think that he is going to run my PowerPoint to go over this, and while we've given some, some updates on it, this is just a little bit more detail. Obviously, we have more expansive detail on all of the expenditures that we've had since the beginning of, what the beginning of COVID has been like in our records, but for a summary for this presentation, I'd like to just go over what the expenditures have been, and just kind of broken down by object code, which for us is by area of our budget. So the way we received funds were broken down by certain funds that the district was given, and there were four different fund areas and budget amounts, and they were broken down by dates for time periods of expenditures that you may have. So I wanted to just kind of review what the expenditures were and kind of how we allocated them throughout the pandemic. So if you look at the first one, this is the Supplemental Public School Response Fund number one, and this one is broken down by two different dates, March 13th, 2020, which is always going to be the first date that the pandemic is always using as the first starting date, that the pandemic response funds are always going to start, that you can identify as any of your costs for the district. And the first year would go from March 13th until June 30th of 2020. So we identified, excuse me, we identified $170,000 worth of costs that we attributed that were to COVID in that time period. So as you can see, if you go down the areas of salary, benefits, repairs, purchase services, supplies, furniture, and equipment, and then you can see in the next time period, from July 1 of 2020 to December 30 of 2020, costs that were also attributed to COVID that we also applied to that supplemental fund number one. So of all of these costs, we were able to apply to the first fund, which had a budget allocated of $596,600. Now that is a cost that was allocated to us from the state. So what we did is, when we took all the costs, knowing that we only could have costs that were up until December 30th, we looked at all the costs that were up until that date and allocated them to this fund. So this is not an all-inclusive amount, so I just listed some of the items that we put towards these costs. So for example, setting up the tent, the HVAC assessment repairs, the electrostatic sprayers, hand sanitizers, disinfectant, masks, gloves, plexiglass, the Chromebooks, miscellaneous tech items, so all of those things during that time period that we allocated towards that one fund totaled $596,600. Okay? Then if you look to the next fund, this again was the second round of Supplemental Public School Response Fund number two. Now this is the one, this is the one, as you remember, was the, it was sort of the competitive one where each district had to apply for these funds, and Derry was awarded Each, each district was awarded 66% of what they applied for. So in this round, again, you could only take costs up until December 30th of 2020. So again, we put all of our costs up until that point, we had salary, which was related to tutoring students, teachers that we had working either remote or in-house due to having to have additional classes, we had, we paid custodians overtime due to having to do deep cleaning on the weekends, we also had the benefits associated with that, again, additional HVAC assessments and repairs, of course, more hand sanitizer, disinfectants, the additional Chromebooks, walkie-talkies. Again, these are just additional costs, again, allocated to another fund, we're just separating them out by fund. And we separated out to use up that fund. So now that we used up two of those funds with costs that were spent up until December 30th, we then had our next fund that we could use, and that one was ESSER Funding, which was Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund. Now the difference between the first two funds and this one is the first two were more state funding, ESSER funds are federal funds, so federal funds just have to be run a little bit differently. The first two were funds that we were given upfront, and ESSER funds, we have to apply for them, so it's like applying for a grant. And so the, the ESSER Funding, Derry is allocated $354,340. And in this fund, we have to use up this $354,000 before we can get, tap into the next ESSER fund, which I'm going to go into in the next one. So in this one, again, we're taking all our additional costs and tapping into ESSER funds, and we've applied, we're applying through ESSER funds, we have to write a grant for this and apply to the state, and they will reimburse us for these costs. And then once this is expended, then we go on to the next one, which on the next page, is ESSER II Funding. ESSER II Funding, we've been we've been allocated $3,540,316. Again, we are putting salary applying towards this, benefits, additional HVAC costs. Um, we have purchased, we had asked the schools, particularly at the middle school level, if there were any furniture needs, but, um, particularly in some of their classes where they had, um, desks and they were not able to, um, have their distance between students. So we ordered some additional, um, furniture, so we applied these costs. So now we've, we've expended the first three funding allocations, and now we are working on ESER II funding sources, which is this 3.5 million. So to date, we have, um, $3,83,000 still remaining available of the ESER II funds. Now, we have not included, um, any of the work that we plan on doing this summer, which would be the summer learning camps, because we plan on using, uh, these funds for that. We plan on doing additional HVAC work, which will be taken out of this ESER II. I know there's going to be additional, there'll be additional tutoring, there'll be additional programming, um, there will probably be, uh, Jeremy and I were talking to Katie, again, from the state last week. Um, we will be doing some window replacement, um, because that was needed in some of the schools, and that is a, uh, appropriate use of, um, ESER funds. Um, we also have additional staffing costs that are going to be coming out of here. So there's still fun, costs that are going to be coming out of this ESER II that just have not been reflected in here as of, as of yet. So the next chart, it's just more of a visual for you so that you can see the, um, the cost of how much was budgeted and how much was spent. So you can see that the ESER II in gold, um, the large amount that we were receiving in ESER II, uh, 3.5 million, and we've spent 456 of it, 456,000 of it so far. And the supplemental fund, we had $894,000, and we've spent all of that. The supplemental fund of $596,000, we've spent all of that. And ESER I, we had $354,000, and we've spent all of that. And the last page, just to make it very simple, to date, the Derry School District has allocated so far, um, in funds available for COVID costs, $5,385,732. And we have remaining, um, funds available to spend of $3,83,000. Now, keep in mind that the funds that we've spent, that we've exhausted so far, um, three of them had to be spent, two of them had to be spent by December 30th. ESER I had to be spent by September 30th of 2021. And you had to use those funds before you can tap into ESER II, which is why we've already exhausted those funds. ESER II has to be used before September 30th of 2023. And then there is ESER III coming up. Now ESER III, actually, the state put out an email yesterday that they were gonna put on a webinar, and then they took it right back, but now they sent it out again today, uh, which I think they're doing Thursday, Marian. They, Marian and I both got it yesterday, and then they took it away. So I, I think, might be back on.
It, it is, I think.
I think it is back on. Um, so I, and there's, of, there's of course paperwork that goes along with it, and some very quick timelines and turnaround that we're required to do, and a plan that has to go with it in order for the district to even, um, receive those funds. So, um, of course, there's, there's never any money for not doing any work, there's a lot of work that's tied to the district getting any of these funds. But ESER III, so far, our understanding is that ESER III is calculated, estimated 2.33 times the ESER II allocation. So for Derry, that would be 2.33 times the $3.4 million. So it's estimated that Derry would receive another $8.2 million. Now, of course, that's a lot of money, but there are very, um, it's very specific, um, what ESER III funds would be used for. So, um, and they just put out, there's a lot of guidance that they just put out for, it will be reviewed on the webinar on Thursday. And, um, but of course, a lot of it is for promoting student, student learning and student achievement, and, um, so Marian and I will be, uh, both watching that on Thursday, and we'll of course bring a, an update to the board. So we don't have finalized numbers, so, but of course, once we get those, I'll bring them back to the board. And once we have, um, additional costs for more, um, updated numbers on any further expenditures for ESER, I'll bring those back further for you. And I just want to give you a couple other, our updates, unless you have questions on, do you have any questions on ESER before I move on to the rest of my report? No?
I just, I wanna, I wanna be clear. So I know when we first talked about ESER III, it was 2 point, or it was like 2% or 2.33%, and now it's 2.3 times is the estimation?
I believe it was times, not percent. I apologize if I said percent.
No, no, I mean, a couple of weeks ago, I think, when we had our meeting, it was, uh, stated we might get 2.3%. I thought, I thought that had, I, I could be wrong, but.
I might have said percent, but I think I meant times.
All right.
I apologize.
I mean, that's much better news.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause I think 2.33% would have been maybe like 83,000? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that would have been big boo-boo on my part, yeah. So if there are no further questions on, on ESER, um, I just have a, a couple of the things. Uh, paving, as you know, is going to take place, um, at our three schools that had the first layer done, and we are going to start that on June 21st, and they're gonna start at Dairy Village, because we're gonna do our summer programming at Dairy Village. Originally, we're gonna do it at Barker, but, um, after reconsideration, we have more space at Dairy Village. So the paving will start at Dairy Village on June 21st, and then they will move on to, uh, either West Running Brook or South Range, whichever other, whichever they move on to. And, um, uh, maintenance has been very busy. We're working on, uh, crafting RFPs to do the summer projects, flooring, things like that. Uh, they'll be getting ready for those projects. I also just want to mention in food service, last week, I worked through a, an audit. It was, it was basically called an administrative technical assistance audit with, um, Sherri White from the state, and Susan Baroskis, and, um, Christine Lobelzick, our kitchen manager here. And we went through, there was a lot of criteria. Susan Baroskis had to complete, um, a lot, a lot of questions from, it was basically, they, they normally do an onsite audit for a food service program, so this year, they, they did it as written, and they were basically auditing the summer program instead of an onsite. And there was a lot of questions. It was very detailed on how we managed our, our summer program and the feeding program that we did for students, which they called the seamless summer option, which was the, the free summer program. And, um, Sherri had high praises for Susan Baroskis and all of our food service staff, and, you know, I was really proud of all the accolades that she gave. It was really a flawless audit, and I really could not be more proud of what the department did and, and the compliments that she gave to the food service department. So, um, kudos to them. And I'm gonna bring back more information at the next board meeting, 'cause I, I'm, I think that the board should probably take a vote at the next board meeting, because, um, we believe that the federal government's going to probably offer the same seamless summer option for the next school year next year, but that districts can opt out of that. So districts can either choose the SSO, which is a seamless summer option of giving all students free meals again next year, or doing the standard NSLP, which is charging students. Now, some districts are going back to the NSLP, and that's because, um, they, because parents aren't filling out their free and reduced applications, and some districts are worried about having those free and reduced numbers. So I think that that's just a longer conversation that the board will need to take into consideration, and I'll bring that forward at the next board meeting. So, um, I just wanna kind of bring that to your attention, that that will be coming. And also, if we do the SSO, uh, the federal government is also considering, they're not going to just be receiving, um, the rate that we received this year, they're actually going to be giving districts a higher rate than we got this year, because, um, it really didn't cover as much as we really needed for a cost per meal. So it would benefit the, the program greatly. So that's all I have, unless anybody has any, any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Jane? If not, we will move on to committees for manifest? Thank you, Jane.
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion to the board to, um, approve the manifest, the amount of $4,899,074.43, of which general payroll is $3,887,083.70. And general expense in the amount of $1,011,999.73. That concludes the motion. Second, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Does anyone else have anything else they'd like to say about any committee meetings they attended? Okay. If not, we will move on to FYI. In your packet, there is a May 1 enrollment report and a letter about the last day of school for families. And from there, we will move on to delegates and individuals. Is there anyone in the public who would like to ask questions or make a comment? Come on up, please just state your name and address for our records.
I couldn't tell if it was that time.
It's that time, you've got the floor.
It's that time. Amy Rayun, 604 Coles Grove Road. Hey, look, the people I voted for, hi! That was embarrassing, huh? So I wrote a couple of things down. I was watching at home, which is why I came in. First of all, I just wanna say thank you for, uh, the dedication to particularly my sons. Um, I know you guys aren't responsible for Pinkerton, but my older son has been in school full-time this entire year, except for one exposure, uh, so he had to be home for two weeks. My younger son attends West Running Brook, and he has been here at least four days a week for the entire year, and is making progress. He was just not here when it was closed for two weeks. So, um, and I attribute that, obviously, to his team, especially, uh, Casey Kirshaw and Dylan Pelletier. Um, some of the case managers in this district were given a double caseload, 'cause their team members were teaching remote, and they still had to pull off all special education services, so.
That's your daughter, right?
She's something special. I, I, I just made that connection last year, so. Let's see. I wanted to come down and talk to you about Dr. Garofalo's report. So I just, uh, I, I didn't have good reception on the way here, so I didn't get to see the end of it. Um, my, a couple of things. Um, I, I wanted to know if in the future, or if part of your research, did you see the same results for children with special education needs? 'Cause that's over 20% of the students here in Derry. And so I think, I think that, I'm not sure what you found, but there are also the, the side effects of staying on technology. Um, I know there were times where I asked, can I have something on paper? 'Cause Cole's getting a headache, or back problems, or, you know, the things that come on. And I understand that here in the classroom, it's developmental learning. Um, but I guess I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing your thoughts on how it affects children with special education, and then that, you said there's a committee this summer to talk about what will that balance be next year?
Uh, I'm glad you brought that up. It, the research seems to be very, very generalized at this time. It is something that we can look into further, and I can work with the special education department, um, to see if we can get more information, um, as well as look at our own teachers and students and get input from them, because, as I said, it was pretty general with what, um, uh, I couldn't find any research that was specific to populations whatsoever. The only thing that was mentioned was the underserved, um, and so forth. As far as the committee situat-, all of our subject committees, math, um, ELA, they're all speci-, they all meet individually with, within their departments and so forth. All of them will be looking at, um, screen time and so forth and so on. So maybe that's something we can look at from a special education standpoint as well. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
If the public is invited, you know, I've, I'm always open to join anyone. But I think that's important because of, not only the access, but for the obvious reasons of how much people with special needs can participate using technology. And thank you, Dr. Dancy. Uh, Cole definitely had an accent, accident with his computer, and it was replaced within a day. I need to send a check to somebody. I don't know who, but, um, it was a second offense, so. Well, I said, that's why you put it in your case, and he didn't put it in his case, so. I just saw that you approved Dr. Thibodeau's resignation on here. Oh my! So I just wanted to give thanks to her. She has done both of my sons' three-year evaluations for all their whole school careers. I've asked for her. Even just recently, um, Cole was struggling with his Orin Gillingham teacher, and he really struggles with visual perceptual things, and Dr. Thibodeau took the time to evaluate Cole his last three-year eval on four different occasions, 'cause he knows, she knows that's what's important for him, to get a good result of the assessment. So, um, so I just wanna say thank you for Dr. Thibodeau and her investment in my children. Um, this doesn't have to be discussed here, but I would like to know how she'll transfer that knowledge to the other psychologists in the dis-, in the district. And the lawsuit, I am here to say I support that lawsuit decision. This is very exciting. I, I remember when it first happened, when the original articles came out, and it looks like, was it, I'm sorry, is it Conval?
Yeah, the Conval School District is the lead point of.
I believe, I believe the money that they're receiving covers their food, and that's about it. Literally, the money that they're receiving from the state covers what they, the food, that's it, in their school district. I remember reading that article. So as a member of the public and a parent, I just wanted to come in and say that I support that, joining that as well, 'cause obviously, we need to increase our adequacy funds, and it's not happening elsewhere. And I think that was it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah? Would anyone else from the public like to speak?
Hello, I'll be really quick. Um, I'm Erin Spencer, 57 Stonegate Lane, but I'm here in my capacity as the new District One Town Counselor and the liaison to the school board, so I just wanted to introduce myself, um, let you know that now that, now that I'm vaccinated and we've gotten through the town budget process, I will try to be at as many meetings as I can. So if I can be of any help or, uh, anything you think the town and school board can collaborate on, please don't hesitate to reach out. That's it.
Thank you very much for attending. Thank you, Erin, we look forward to working with you this year. So next, under other business, if, does anyone else have anything? I have one. I have one item. So just the one item I wanted to mention is that I did receive a letter from Dave Leveque of the DEA saying he was ready to start negotiations for our next, for, for contracts for teachers. So we are in the process of setting up that date, and we look forward to working with the teachers to come up with a contract that's agreeable to both sides. So that is what I've got under other business. So the next item would be to, we will not be adjourning tonight because we are going back to non-public, so we will just be adjourning back to non-public. So thank you, everyone who came to watch, and to all of our viewers online, and we appreciate all of your support.
So I think we just need a motion to go back into non-public for the purpose of...
So moved.
Do you want the RSA? RSA 91-A:32, A and C?
And I heard a second from Lynn? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.